I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. I didn't have a slated spot to talk. Vern was supposed to do this portion of it. I know Vern's traveling back from trying to close out his parents' estate in New York. So, very honored to be here. It is great to see such a nice hour for you to support. To come and hear about the issue three that's on the report for the members' election. So, this, you know, tonight's about the new schools and what that means. Dominic has some things that he wants to say, but, you know, it's about our community. It's about unity, and it's about opportunity. How I like to look at our school system, you know, Fairport Harbor schools, to me, there are past, there are present, and they're definitely are future. So, you know, the villages of Fairport Harbor and the school system, they're always going to be synonymous with one another. And I know there's some controversy or some questions about the funding models and how we got to where we are today. I know Dominic will talk, talk about some of that. Just let me leave you with this as we start off. The state is willing to match, or willing to give 93% towards this construction. That's 93% of tax dollars that you and I have paid into. It's not a gift from the state of Ohio, which are dollars. If we don't take advantage of the 93% now, those dollars, four dollars, and my dollars will go to an orgy. All we have to do is come up with 7% from the other side of that to put the new schools in art. To me, it just seems like a investment. Again, and I guess Vern is here now. We should have given Vern a couple of minutes. But anyway, I'm good. Vern, I took your opening slides. I don't know if you have anything that you would really have a burning desire to say, but I can turn the mic over to you if you could. Alright, great. Well, he's got a nice sports coat on. I don't know if you're sure about this. Alright, Dominic, I'll turn it over to you next. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, ladies and gentlemen, welcome here. I'm real excited about this opportunity that's coming our way. And I want to make sure that you're well informed by the end of the day. If you have questions, we're going to give you an opportunity to write those down, and we will convene and try to give the best answer we can today. If we have to get back to you later, we'll do that. I want to introduce the two people that are going to be giving the presentation with me, and they are, right here, we have our treasurer, Sherry Williamson, and our school board president, Mr. Zeke, Mr. Zeke. I want to start off by letting Sherry tell you a few things about the financing behind this issue number. Go ahead, sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, nice to see you all there. So, as was already kind of talked about a little bit. Ohio School Facilities Commission, which we also refer to as the state, they're willing to pay 93% of the co-funded building portion of this project. The district is going to be responsible for 7% of the co-funded projects go plus 100% of the locally funded initiatives such as the community library. So, the percentages sound great, right? But let's see what that looks like in actual dollars. Again, this should be OSCC, but that's okay. So, that's really what they're on the hook for, over $3 million to this project. The state is willing to contribute. If we can get this $5 million passed, if no matter, they will commit to that $38 million. Total project in its totality is the $43 million, $50,008, $998.39. That's how we've worked with architects to come up with anticipated costs for the entire school building, and that's where we are. The next slide here, this is actually just to get you kind of a heads up of what it's going to look like on the ballot, what is going to look like when you are going to the voting box to make your selection. There is two parts to this ballot if you read it in its entirety. The $5 million bond levy right now is estimated at 3.9 mil. The one thing I did want to share with the community is that $5 million isn't $5 million in tax revenues that's going to come for the district. That is giving us the authority to borrow $5 million. So, as we borrow the funds that we need, as we start building the school building, that's where we start getting taxed on whatever that dollar amount is. So, that's the first part. The second part, we are required under by the Facilities Commission to have a maintenance levy aligned with the brand of school building. And it's a half a mil. So, what we have decided to do was put that half mil on right now as an interim permanent proof levy. So, that is the second half of the ballot language that you would read here. And again, if you read the language, these are specific purpose types of levy. The bonds can only be used for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, equipping, adding, and renovating the new building. Same with the permanent improvement. They are specific for, we're going to start, for acquisition, again, construction, enlargement, renovation, and maintaining of general permanent improvement. So, these funds that, once passed, cannot be used for any kind of operating. Usage is specifically for the building and the maintaining of the building.
Thanks, Sherry. Ladies and gentlemen, just so I can know my audience, raise your hand if you went to McKinley Elementary. It's numerous, too. I know we have people that attend this. That building is now 110 years, 110 years old. Who here went to Harding High School? Alright, a lot of people around the room. That building's now 100 years old. Those buildings are beautiful. They serve the community well. They've been maintained well. They've held up remarkably. They're historic and beautiful, but they are inefficient, and they're not easily accessible to all of our stakeholders. We've had a couple of facilities audits done. One in 2016. This is called, it was called an energy audit. It was part of a project called House Bill 264 Project. The description of that would be, if we conducted an energy audit, and the state were able to demonstrate to the state that we were spending more on electricity and gas than heat and light our schools, then it would cost to pay off the renovations over a 30-year period, the state would lend us the money, and it would be paid off through our energy savings. The cost of those upgrades was going to be $3.5 million. Now, that would have been local funding for those energy upgrades. Yet, they would have been paid off by local money over the course of a 30-year period, which means that over $100,000 a year in lost energy, with energy costs, I'm sorry, electricity and gas, and we could avoid those because of the water. So, there are numerous other upgrades on the ride. Elevators and ramps alone were projected by the Office of Civil Rights. Elevators and ramps alone cost over $1 million. And, of course, it'd be other additional costs to the construction, with the asbestos and so on. My point is that just doing the energy efficiency upgrades and the handicap accessibility upgrades would cost the community about the same. It's been, and I don't mean to belabor this point, but handicap access parts. The Office of Civil Rights mandated numerous expensive modifications over the last decade, and the district has proceeded in good faith to meet those expectations. We have, we put in a lift at McKinley. We put in a ramp in the auditorium at Harding at one point before I even got here. But these are not, I'm not going to say they're afterthoughts, but the buildings were not originally designed. They're not part of the original design. And with the new building, we will have these, we will have these things all taken care of. All of our, all of our stakeholders, all of our students, all of our parents, all the people that want to be at the school can have complete access to them. We're calling it universal person accessible. And that's what this project will give us. Current conditions of McKinley and Harding, the Band-Aids we have to put on that causes between the loss heat and the placing of damaged portions, boilers, and the, I can't even calculate the custodial time to spend repairing and maintaining these buildings. But they continue to require expensive Band-Aids. These aren't real fixes, the patches to remove, the replacement of roofs. They're reporing of boilers, replacing them with energy-efficient modern boilers, and so on. I'm sure you can understand. And as the cost of operating, maintaining our aging facilities rises, it creates additional demands on our financial resources. And I'd rather spend these resources on the kids, on things, programs, and opportunities for students. In addition to these things I've talked about, the new facilities will improve our safety, security, and help us traffic better with additional parking on the front campus. So, people are back up on the roads. And these are some of the things that I believe this community deserves and can have in past issues. I want to turn over Mr. Zeke this, so we can make some summarizing comments.
Just a few things. First off, I'd like to thank everybody here for taking your time to be here. A lot of familiar faces in the audience. A lot of people have committed a lot of hours of service to this community. This is, you know, really, for us, a phenomenal opportunity to take that next step. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. What I would like to go over is kind of the structure for the rest of the evening. So, we've kind of made for our slideshow. We'll talk a little bit more to come to the close. But in the back of the room, there is a forum for questions. If you have a question, I'm sure a lot of people, after having seen the slideshow, maybe asked some questions. I'm sure a great many of you came into the room tonight with questions. We will assure you 100% that any question written down and asked, we will answer. We may not, you know, we do want to be respectful of our time. We are shooting for about an hour for this first event. So, we're going to, we're going to answer what we can this evening. But rest assured, if we have a daily questions, any question written down and submitted will be answered. Any question that comes to myself, Dr. Paolo, Ms. Williamson, throughout the course of this project, from now until November 3rd, day after, still answer questions. Reach out, reach out to fellow board member, fellow, many fellow board members here in the world tonight. We value very much transparency on the board and a willingness to reach out and respond to the community. So, again, as we go through this, there's question forums in the back. We'll answer everything that we can today. That'll kind of be the format for that. So, what we'll do is I'll finish up the slideshow here, and then probably, you know, give about five or 10 minutes. If you want to write down a question, you can submit it to our moderator, Mr. Horton, in the back of the room. And we will, like I said, take about five or 10 minutes. We kind of go through those, compile and answer for you, and then share it out. This is, you know, a long process. And I would like to thank the individuals, part of our bond committee, who have been meeting regularly for a long time to really get this thing going and get us to where we are right now for this very exciting opportunity. So, as we look at, we talked about why we need a new K-12 facility at Fairport Harbor. Great talking points out here. Modern, state-of-the-art facility. As those expectations change, we want to make sure that we are positioned to continue to change what. So, if we think about the history of the buildings, when they were constructed, and how they were designed, that, it didn't take into account a lot of what we're looking at today. Obviously, demographics have changed. Students who are servicing have changed. We want to make sure that we're able to accommodate those students and accommodate those families within our facilities safely and effectively. Cost-effective and energy-efficient, as anyone can tell you, you know, we don't want to lose those funds. The board's taking a great priority for fiscal responsibility, looking to find funds where we can, and really value each dollar that we take in through taxes. Those are, as Mayor Manoros was saying, those are our dollars, too. So, you know, we really want to take this seriously. I would much rather invest $1 in making sure that the student has an opportunity than $1 in the leaky window. So, if we can look and make those changes and make those improvements, we'd be in a much better position moving forward as far as efficiency. So, for today's educational program, we want to really have a facility that can grow and change. So, the last year, with everything that's gone on, the opportunities when it comes to education really explode. And we want to make sure that we have facilities that can accommodate that through Wi-Fi, through just design and flexibility in our space. Maximizing the district resources, state-of-the-art technology, all that. The full ADA accessibility is such an issue. And Dr. Paolo touched on it twice. I think it bears mentioning again. When we talk about first-person design, we want, the only question for an individual to have that's going to visit our building is, do I have a reason to go? Do I have something to talk about? We don't want anyone to have to consider, where do I have to park? How do I have to enter? Who do I have to have help me get where I need to be at our facilities? We want, and we've done a lot in good faith to try to get there as much as possible. But as Dr. Paolo said, these are old buildings, old designs. If we have a new facility, we want to be able to say, every single square inch of that facility is accessible to anybody who wants to visit. And that's a priority for us. We're bearing students who are a global workplace, serving as a community center for different community activities. And that kind of goes along with the library. This is, this is a facility that will not only bring pride to our community, but it will be a useful space as we, you know, a lot of people around this room are involved in various organizations throughout the community. There's Civic Club members, the club members, PTO members, academic booster members, athletic booster members. This is a facility for us to meet. This is a facility for us to use as a community. And it'll be a source of pride as people come in and want to join our, you know, this school will be something that they can drive by and look at and say, that's something that they want to be a part of. And it goes back to that pride. Fairport has a lot, we've always had pride in our, in our homes, in our families, in our schools. And this is really just that next step when it comes to making sure that generations from now will still have that pride. Everybody, there's enough people in this room who remember when the existence of Fairport Schools was threatened, and the work the voters did in '81 to make sure that that didn't happen. By continuing that, we honor that commitment, and we honor the independence that we enjoy as an exempted village school district. And it allows us to be the masters of our own destiny, which I think is very critical for us moving forward as we continue to grow as a community. So, where do we want to be on November 2nd? Well, we have a long road to get there. It seems closer than it is. There's a lot of work to be done between now and then. We're going to be counseling the community. We're going to be talking to people. We're going to be getting feedback. We're going to be sharing out. We have plans, like I said before, the bond issue committee is working tirelessly. We're looking at size, we're looking at flyers, we're looking at information. You know, every community activity between now and then, we'll have a table added. We can share, share by well-enforcement of you right now. I really feel that we are in a great position with this 93, you know, this 93%. As Mayor Manoros said, these are our tax dollars coming back into this community. And we can't stress that enough. And we can take that, and we can build with that. These schools are part of those foundational things that make a community great. So, if we look at things that we have invested in already as a community, an independent library, an independent leasing fire, you know, our continued investment in our port and our beachfront property, in our partnerships with metro parks, with that's law, we have a lot of positives. And when we think about community growth and community improvement, there's, you know, there's not a slope. There's not a brand. There's not a plan. It's those foundational pieces, good schools, good services, good local government that make a community strong. And, you know, we want to make sure that we can continue that. We want to make sure that we can maintain that. And the facilities are a big part of that. We have to make sure that we can stop chasing repairs and really start to invest in something that's going to last, you know, 50 or 100 more years. That our children will attend, our great-grandchildren will attend. And it's just a phenomenal opportunity that we really do have to take advantage of this community. So, as we kind of go through, like I said, I'm sure a great many people have questions. We are going to do written questions, additional information about the project, and other ways to reach out and ask questions. Facebook is a thing, I'm sure many of you are aware of. Twitter, you will have some things posted on YouTube. Instagram, we have Instagram on? Yeah, no? So, what we are looking at is, you know, let's use these. This is just one way of communication. So, this town hall is a rather classic way of sharing information and showing our support or concern about a big project like school. Obviously, far more common in the 21st century is that digital landscape, so social media. What I'm going to ask you to do is, you know, go on social media. When you do, I'm going to, I'm going to implore you to be positive, be proactive. This is a question, ask the question by all means. But it's important to remember, especially when we're on social media, that, you know, behind those memes, behind the emojis, behind all those things are real people. Our friends, our neighbors, our community members. So, I do, you know, I do ask that we continue to be respectful. I think the discord on this so far has been very productive and very positive. I would implore you to continue in that regard. But these are some areas that we have. There'll be information available throughout the community. There's information at the library, information at the senior center. We have a table full of information at the back. Also, in the back, we do have the opportunity for sign-up for yard signs. We will deliver those to you. I believe Jeff's Garage Off would be a location, too, for pickup or levy signs, once we have them. And if you're looking for an opportunity to show your pride in the front yard, you can. And as we go through this, I just a few more people would like to thank for their opportunity here. Mr. Levine has brought some refreshments for us here at the back of the room, some glazed donuts. We appreciate that. And again, I do appreciate everyone for taking their time out, coming to listen to what we had to say, and the hard work and dedication of all the people who have already, you know, who've been on the bond, have done their work, have done their service to this community. So, I think this is very much an exciting opportunity. And I know I've said that a number of times, but again, you know, get across what this would mean as our district continues to grow, as our community continues to grow. This is something that will be of value to us for many years to come. So, what I would like us to do now is, you know, if you have any questions, let's take a moment, let's take about five or 10 minutes, let you get a refresh, use the restroom, write down a question, get it to Mr. Horton. What we'll do in the kind of last half hour, do want to, and honor everybody's time, so we can shoot for about a 7:30 close, is if you have a question, write it down. In the next five or 10 minutes, we'll compile those. We'll get back together, we'll answer a few of those questions. And like I said, this is just the first meeting in a long process of getting information out of the community. So, feel free to ask a question and keep your eyes open on social media for more information that's coming. We also do have two tours available, one on Wednesday, September 15, and another on September 22. The tour of McKinley is on the 22nd. The tour of Harding is on the 15th. There's flyers in the back and information online. Like I said, right now, if you have any questions, go to the back, take a sheet, write your question out. And like I said, in about five or 10 minutes, we'll get together and answer. Okay, thank you very much, Ed, for taking the time and submitting some questions. We've got some great questions up here. Like I said, as much as possible, we're going to try to commit to that one hour. So, we are going to look at, you know, about a half hour's worth of questions. We'll get through, there's a couple that have been, a couple of repeat questions on here. But as I said before, it's very important to remember, if your question is not getting answered, if your question is not getting answered satisfactorily, please don't hesitate to reach out and ask us. A lot of the questions that you asked tonight are going to be integrated into future, you know, frequently asked questions, flyers of information that will go out on our website, information that will go out on our social medias. And, you know, I do ask you to be patient, you know, as we just have received these questions. A lot of them are things that we've already thought about, things that we've taken into consideration, things that we, as board members, community members, and school personnel already value and have already thought about. So, we can, I feel that we can give you the solid answer for most of these, but even if you didn't get the full answer that you finally get, don't hesitate to reach out. So, the first question we have is, what plans are being considered for McKinley property? This came up a few times through the design, and those of you who have seen it, we are looking at a K, pre-K-12 campus that will allow us to eliminate a lot of redundant systems and fit a lot of what we're doing as we talk about efficiency within that space, which means that McKinley will be vacant. What we can do if we look at demolition during the part of this process is this, as we look at that 93% of that co-funding, that will apply to demolition as well. So, it would not be something if we had waited or hesitated. Any project like this is generally our speculation of, oh, what if we did this with this property? What if we did that with this property? Right now, as it stands, our plan would be to take advantage of that 93% match for demolition and bring McKinley down. And when we say do that, at the very same time, being very respectful of the history, the architecture, and all those pieces that went into that. We have plans as part of our design to, you know, to capture, to preserve certain architectural details for both buildings moving forward. We'll have multiple opportunities for people to visit. And I'm sure we have a great many very talented photographers in the community who will take great joy in capturing the memories of these buildings that give us. So, that's what we're looking at as far as, right now. What an incredible opportunity with the 97% of the furniture, since the technology of the school.
We're going to be able to take our tech off. You will share a little plan of furnishings? We haven't talked about that. We, we've been investing in technology, so we can take our technology with us, and the 93% co-funding will apply to the school furniture. But much of the stuff we've been focusing or spending on has been technology. Is we actually have some of the best technology access of any school. Smart boards, laptops, kids.
And as we look at this, it's important to take into consideration when we're thinking about things like furnishings, design. Right now, you see the footprint that's being proposed up there on that sign. It's important to remember, this stage of the process, and what we've done, the work we've done up until now, there's been a series of months and a series of meetings essentially determining whether or not, is this a feasible project? You know, looking at the cost, looking at the land we have to work with, looking at our square footage requirements. This design here is, it's a base. What this says is, the state has agreed that we can do the project that we want to do, the cost we want to do it, on this acreage that we have commissioned. So, we are very much in the early stages of this. And all this has come back is understanding that, yes, that this is a feasible project. Yes, we can get in the cost if we want to. And this is the end result of numerous meetings of various stakeholders and investors. What percentage of students live in Fairport? The question about McKinley Building that has not changed. Currently, our enrollment is currently about 44% of the roll. 42? Okay. And we'll talk a little bit more, but there's a few more questions regarding enrollment that we'll talk to as we move through this. Where would children go to school during the construction? What happens to the 40% plus open enrollment students? Those students are very much a part of our student body. They're identified or segregated in any way. We look at it as one full student body. The construction, if you notice out here, anyone familiar with the current facilities is essentially flopping the green space for construction space. So, as we move through this process... So as we move through this process, as one building goes up, the other building will come down. And then the students will, we won't have to worry about, there's so many construction nightmares. I've seen enough, I've been through enough school facilities, projects, you know, there was always talking trailers or offsite or any number of things. Essentially, the students will continue schooling where they are, this would be no problem again. And as the one building comes up, the other building will come down. How the library is funded for this project? Library is square footage, so part of the square footage, taking into consideration, is paid for. Also, it's a considerable section of our library will be focused, or will be funded by what is called locally funded initiative, or LFI. This is money that is not coming from the state, it's coming directly from our community. And these are projects and things that are generally not covered under Ohio Schools Facilities Project. Library, you know, our community library being a part of that. So, you know, we have to come up with those funds locally. And when we talk about our commitment to the library as school board, as school personnel, I think that the fact that 100% of our LFI square footage right now is dedicated to that goal of reaching square footage that is acceptable for our library. And that is going to be a big part of this project, a big part of maintaining that for the community. Outside of the education benefit of smaller school, why shouldn't we consolidate with Paines City or Township? Being both that they have newer schools already. There is some rules regarding consolidation, I'm sure you might.
So, I can't say exactly the way we, I showed, but the way that this is an exempted village, you would have to consolidate with the city. So it would be the central city, there would be no other place to go as far as to that township. So, I mean, again, that's, that's, that's where the consolidation would come into play as far as where the students would go, they would have to consolidate with Paines City.
And there is, you know, as this question comes up, and we continue to talk about it, consider it, there is a lot of speculation. And we do kind of want to focus on facilities today. But there is a strong degree of independence when it comes to Fairport, source of pride for us. And, you know, keeping that independent school district is very important. There are some things that we want to contain and keep under our control when it comes to education. And that's just going to be difficult to do, plus the finance piece that we're looking at, the likelihood of, you know, there is some thought of, well, if Fairport schools go away, you know, that expense will go away as well, that tax expense. The reality is, we would very likely consolidate with Paines City. And their school tax rate is identical, but incrementally smaller, or higher, excuse me, than our own right now. So that would continue to be an expense if we lose that self-determination, plus the facilities themselves. Even mentioned a question, they can facilitate, they want to populate. I think that it would be far more likely that they would invest buses than it would be, they would invest in current facilities. Being that my vote will not only be based on if we need a new school, but also if the board can follow a plan and be held accountable. How much work has been done since April, May? And the five recommendations presented by the state auditor as a strategic plan has been started? Will the community students, teachers be involved in the plan? Yes, they will be, we do have accountability, it's always a priority for the board. And the expectation that board members are lots of officials, and we do welcome the accountability. We welcome participation, we value transparency, and we welcome community involvement. We have done some things, there are some things that are kind of in process in regards to those five recommendations, the state audit. The board members were part of that state audit, we have seen the information presented. There's some things that we would debate as far as that audit is concerned, but we do value it and we have understood very much so. Like every previous board performance, the finances are important. And that fiscal responsibility is key for our continued health and wellness of the district. So we are for accountability and student, you know, we will, council committees are ready for them. We're now at the last board meeting, the Personnel Committee has been formed, we have an Academic Achievement Committee has been formed. And as this project moves forward, we anticipate more committees and more opportunity for feedback. What is being done to reduce the number of open enrollment students? Open enrollment getting to 49% over the past five years? What is preventing this building from housing more open enrollment students than resident students? Next, probably, do you want to talk a little bit about the value that open enrollment students brings to Fairport?
First of all, as Mr. Zieg said earlier, we treat all the students, they're our students, and we don't segment them into different groups. The opening of, the open enrollment students brings a lot. The revenue they generate for this district is equivalent, we think, around $27 bills every year. And we did, but they, but I, I don't know how to talk about them either, because they're our students. And they come in every year to make contributions that allow us to run our schools more efficiently than us. We can have more digital classrooms, we can fill out our support scores, and we have better school experience for the young learning and support. We really don't want to ever see that go away.
Will they be doing anything with the field or press box? You know, this is part of the plan right now, it's not, it's not something we're addressing, it will stay where it is. You know, that is a big part of, we talk about the schools being shared experience within a community, that's a big part of that. We anticipate, you know, some improvements and renovations there. If you notice, the press box is out on there, press box hot button issue, we have a lot of local pride in the city we have now. I can say right now, we don't have anything in design. As this process moves forward, we have budgeted conservatively. In that as we proceed through the years of this project, you know, I don't think we wanted to sort of commit to any one thing for something that's a nice hat on, but not a pretty piece like press box. So what that will look like, we'll know more about in the next year, three years, five years. So, it's definitely something that we have on our radar. It says $500,000 set aside for permanent improvements, how is this cost calculated? And do we have a strategic capital plan? So do you want to talk a little bit about how permanent improvement funds operate?
Great, so, I guess, I think the clarity that I would need is the $54,000 that basically are, what was it, it's $500,000, what was the question? Oh, I'm sorry, here it is, $500,000. So I'm assuming that the question is coming from the permanent improvement levy that is also tied to the maintenance levy, which is .5 mils. What that equates to from the district perspective is about $30,000 a year. So the $500,000, I'm not sure if that is what you are referring to in the question, Kathleen? No, it's .5 mils. Right, so. Right? Right, so as, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So, the .5 mils actually is by law and by, is a requirement of a new facility and for the state to basically commit the funds to the district. So that's where the $5.5 mils came from.
It's not something that we base on what we get from the cost.
That is, that is correct. That is correct, that is correct. It is, you know, like I said, it's, it's hopefully, obviously, the brand new building, the maintenance is going to go down considerably from today's maintenance. And we're going to be much more energy efficient on top of just, just in general, one building versus two buildings. So, is it going to be enough? I mean, we basically, what, you know, we have to go with what the state has done and all the other facilities that have been built over the years, they have said that a point, you know, a half a mil, which is .5 mils, does the job. That's what we, that's what we chose to go with.
Thank you very much. We have, let's see. Another question, where do students go during construction? How long will the construction take? And the slide said 7% plus the extra square footage, what is this? So, as we talk about the extra square footage, locally funded initiatives, these are things that as we as a community look at this project and move forward, you know, these are things that we have determined our values of as a community that necessarily don't fall under the OSFC acceptable, acceptable expenses for lack of a better term. So, the extra square footage right now, we're looking at the library space. I think that will be, give the most for community give back as part of this project. Students going during construction, as the building comes up, we will move them into it. And then how long will construction take? Now, this is a complicated piece as we start talking about this. The funds come in in a different way. So we have a responsibility as part of this system of new facility construction in the state of Ohio to start construction. So we will be taking the money that we raise and starting construction. So starting to do some initial work. And then our place of life and funding comes from Columbus. We have a very favorable, and that's generally determined in audits, we have a very favorable place in line, which is very much oversimplification, but we do have some information that leads us to the back table. So as we start, we right now do not have a firm timeline to be able to tell you. If you hope yes in November, students will be in such and such a date. This will be the beginning of a process that is, the pacing of which is regulated in part by Columbus. So the process will start with us, with the construction. What we're looking at is running some utilities and the construction of a music space. So we've determined in our initial estimates, that is the most effective use, if we can do that, what we're looking at, fund wise. So, you know, as we talk about priorities, it'd be great for our band to have a space to rehearse. And that will be the first part of this, we start. And then as those other funds are released over time, and again, we are talking in a reasonable timeline, we're not talking about decades. But, you know, that is something that will be determined by Columbus. And as I said before, we do have a very, a very good place in line.
There's no district ahead of us in line funding. It hasn't already been funded or, you know, it's either completed or in process. So I don't know, I'm much better at this than you guys. I think we're all pretty good to give you a date, because we don't want to be wrong. But our plan is to pass this into Lepper, begin the phase ones as early as the spring, and then break into.
Everybody, I think the board members are at least prepared to give you a date, because we, it's running to everybody at NASCAR. Tapping their watch. So we have, our last set of questions this evening is, how many actual students are Fairport versus outsiders? We've answered that. And again, it bears mentioning, we do view all of our students as our students. This reason that these students are coming to be a part of what we're doing is a testament to the work that we do. This is a school of choice, this is a place where people are not coming here on convenience. People are coming here because of our staff, because of our programs, because of the things that we're able to do. A good example of that would be no pay to play, you know, we have committed to that, and we want commitment, that finance to be the determination of whether or not somebody's able to participate. We are doing a lot of very innovative things when it comes to education, things at the design lab, early college, which, you know, is, is now more, more off the range. It really didn't start it with us showing that survival logic for students. But now the work we do with Auburn Career Center, and the solutions that we're able to find through pred scheduling for our students to participate in that. We are very much committed to becoming a destination district. And not only those students and Dr. Paulson bring with them and the current value just as people and as academics, but there is a financial attachment that benefits us as a, as a community as well. All right, this is the, this is the last question, I think this is a big question, it's a good question to add, to end on, I think it's a question a lot of people have. How do people with no kids and a fixed income justify this to one less meal a week for us? It's a fair question. We are asking for tax dollars, those are dollars that are being taken out of fixed incomes, fixed budgets. You know, we are a hardworking community, we earn the money that we have, and nothing is given. So, what I can, what I can tell you is that the board takes every dollar that comes across our table very seriously. Every expense is put out, we do not surrender lightly. We do value community, the support that we have had, and I know that our administration, our staff feels the same. So as we bring those dollars in, I can't say, I wish I could say, you know, we, we don't want to ask you for those dollars, you know. What I can say is, you know, the, the old adage is true, you know, the only, the only two things that are forever, that are taxes. As that money comes in, all I can say is that, you know, as we talked about accountability in the past, if you don't appreciate the way that, you know, the board is spending the money that you, you give them to do their, you know, to run this district, hold it accountable, I'm saying that is important. But understand, and there is a degree of faith in this, but every dollar that comes across our, comes across our table, every number on a spreadsheet, we do not take lightly, and we do not let go of it. And this is not so much an expense, but an investment. An investment not only in our kids, but an investment in our community. So if you think about it, you know, a dollar spent on heating or, you know, this is money that disappears. A dollar spent on student, a dollar spent on these facilities is a dollar that's going to come back to us, you know, fivefold over time. So it is something that needs to, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and say it's stepping in the balls of the belt, I think it will. But understand that it, it, there will be a deposit that results from that. So, as we look at that, you know, that brings us to the end of our question and answer session. Hopefully, everybody had their question answered. If not, again, by all means, reach out to us, we are going to integrate a lot of these questions into our future informational sheets and, you know, posts, things of that nature, whether digital or not. We do have some t-shirts available, so this is like a YouTube video, I'll download our plugs here at the end. Please like and subscribe, hit that thumbs up button for notifications. We do have some very nice t-shirts, this were printed by Crispinta, and these are available online. And 100% of the money that comes from, and they're also available to shop, I'm blanking out the shop, I'm sorry. Arlington Gardens, thank you very much. They're available there, 100% of that comes to the bond committee. So, you know, we've, we've taken some donations, we've had some in-kind donations for some of the things. But that's something that's available. And again, those dollars spent on this, you get a great t-shirt, it's very soft. And you get to, you get to take those dollars and invest those back into what we think is going to be a project. So again, you know, as we come to a close to that, just remember, this is the first part in what is going to be a series of informational sessions. You know, reach out, be positive, ensure your. You know, reach out, be positive, share your concerns, share your success and share your stories. And thank you very much, thank you for coming. And thank you very much to VFW for allowing us to use the facility this evening. Uh, when we think about renovations and improvement, this new facility, I'm not sure how many of you have been here, but this is, uh, always been a very nice space with you. Especially, thank you.